Johnson?
Here.
Reeves?
Here.
Mieske?
Here.
Caravelo?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Weisinger?
Here.
And Duranzik?
Here.
There are 11 Alders present.
All right, thank you. We have a couple of presentations tonight. And the first one will be from Corey Neely. And Corey's going to come up and tell us about a grant opportunity.
Thank you for having me here. So, a few weeks ago, we had been approached by a company called Seventh Wave. If you hadn't heard of them, they used to be the Energy Center of Wisconsin. And they're an independent, nonprofit organization that seeks to promote energy efficiency, renewable energy, and other energy technologies in the state of Wisconsin and in the Midwest. As they kind of grew outside of Wisconsin, they changed their name, and thus, we have Seventh Wave. So, they came out to us, the Office of Energy Innovation, which used to be the State Energy Office, is basically doing a federal pass-through of a grant dollars. And in total, there's $5 million out there available to municipals, K-12, and businesses, private businesses in the state of Wisconsin. And these are in one of two tracks. One would be implementation, and the other would be in planning. Currently, five cities are working with Seventh Wave to help write this grant and seek dollars in for implementing, or planning solely for either energy projects planning or energy auditing. There's a bunch of different things that these cities are looking for, but we've tried to pull it under one major grant and have one implementer of that, and that would be Seventh Wave. When they approached us, I passed the information on to the mayor to see if he'd be interested in talking with them. The first contact was from Keith Riappell, who's head of Dane County's Climate Change Department. And we just kind of touched on some of the basics, seeing what our actual work would be to get into this grant. And we attended a phone conference a week or so ago. During that conference, we got to kind of get a little bit of the background on what would be our focus, and I put together a couple paragraphs on the things that we were looking to do, one of which was the ability to look at our parks system and decide how much, if we wanted to go 100% renewable energy on those, what would be the best path forward for that. Second would be looking at city buildings and seeing which ones have the possibility of having solar on them, and is it even feasible to go 100% solar on those? And then, the third thing would be to assess and look at the possibility of having charging stations for vehicles, electric vehicles, and the promotion of electric vehicles in the city of Stoughton. So, those are the three things that we went to look at and wanted them to roll into the grant. Some of the other cities may be a little bit farther ahead. City of Manona has already done 100% renewable energy on some of their things, so they're looking into the possibility of doing storage or other technologies like that, whereas the city of Sun Prairie was looking at just basically planning dollars for the implementation of energy efficiency. So, all together, it was Fitchburg, Middleton, Sun Prairie, and Stoughton and Manona. There may be additional, a few members. Wanakee was looking at jumping in. Of the members, we've got Wanakee, Sun Prairie, and Stoughton would be the three WPPI members. They did approach WPPI to see if WPPI would be willing to match funds, but what we'll probably end up doing is offering in-kind services of energy, you know, data gathering and stuff like that. Ultimately, for me, I can do a lot of the things that are necessary for this grant as part of my daily operational duties for the city of Stoughton and the Stoughton Utilities. So, as far as getting data, figuring out how much the usage is and all that stuff, that's what I do for all the CNI customers here in the city already. So, I'd be willing to take that and do that. What they're asking for is in-kind donation of time to attend meetings and to make recommendations to Seventh Wave and to kind of move them towards the culmination of this grant at the end of it. They would look to do that within, I think, over a year. And just, we're looking for someone in the city, either on city staff or outside of the city, that would be willing to take that time commitment, because I do divvy my time up between four members for WPPI. I have to go to Broadhead, Evansville, Stoughton, and Waterloo. So, I may miss meetings, and I'd rather not have Stoughton kind of have a part-time piece of this. So, total grant amount would be about $415,000. The match amount is $93,000, and that's divvied up between the four members. It looks like everybody's pretty much using in-kind, and I say in-kind, is time and valuing that time differently. My guess is a lot of the time involved will be much shorter for us, because I'll be doing a lot of legwork behind the scenes. But as far as meeting and doing those things, we'll need someone. So, do you have any questions?
I got a question.
Yeah.
For this grant, when is the grant coming and when would you need the 93?
Well...
We could, you know...
Yeah, so, I'm not sure exactly when the grant would be divvied up. They gave a one-month extension. It was supposed to be actually due on the 30th, which is this Thursday, but then they gave a month extension for whatever reason. So, I'm not sure if that's pushed any other timelines out. But we would probably have at least two months before they would announce the winners, I would think. But I don't know for sure on the timeline of, you know, how they're going to accept people, because they did push it back. And then, as far as, you know, figuring out who would be out there, since we have about a month or so before the grant's actually completed, we could draw, we could back out at any time if we decided that we didn't have anyone that would want to be able to make those meetings.
Does it cost for us to do the grant at all?
To apply for the grant? No, there's no cost. So, whatever time is put in, I mean, I've kind of already done a lot of that work and will continue to work with them to kind of do the background stuff. A lot of the things are already done on the grant. They've kind of put it together. You know, I think that Seventh Wave's doing this, obviously, for one, to do more work for them, because they're going to be getting the majority of the funds, but also to push, you know, a regional energy efficiency standard. And what I see is the value of this is, we're going to learn from all these other communities, and, you know, if Manona does an energy storage project and it's successful, we're going to have all that information as part of this grant, and we're going to be able to understand how they did it, you know, what are their challenges. And if they fail, it's even better, because we'll learn from those mistakes, and we'll not be at risk for it. So, our part of the grant is relatively safe. It's nothing more than what I kind of already did for the new park, you know, figuring out how much it would potentially use and then kind of crunching the numbers and saying, okay, this is the size of solar we would need to offset it if we were choosing to do that. One of the things that a lot of the other cities have that we don't necessarily have is kind of a set of proclamations, or, you know, I think the city of Manona's kind of decided that they want to go 100% solar. City of Madison has done that too, but they're not part of this grant. But, you know, they've kind of got a vision and a guide of where they want to go, and I don't know that Stoughton's gotten that far yet. We've done quite a bit of work in energy efficiency, but as far as making proclamations, we haven't done that. So, any other questions?
What level of expertise would the person, the in-kind contributing person, need?
Basically, they would just need to be able to ask questions and understand what our situations are, so have a general working knowledge of the city's facilities, understanding, you know, what we've done so far, kind of a history of what's already kind of been done, but also just kind of knowing where things are in town, being able to speak to that. The things that we listed as our priorities can definitely change. If there's things that we want to take off there or things that we want to add, let's say that there's a building that, you know, we wanted to look at, maybe getting an audit done, we could put that in there as well. You know, potentially, the bank could be a target for that. We could roll in those funds. So, that could potentially save the city some money. Yep.
You mentioned that it's, K-12 is also eligible as long, as well as municipalities. Have you talked to the school board?
Yeah, actually, I'm helping the school district prepare their own application as well, and I'll be doing essentially the same amount of work for them as I would for you guys. I try not to favor one or the other, but they're already doing a comprehensive energy plan. This just kind of works into their favor that they could potentially do even more and actually get more of it paid for. So, it's a pretty competitive grant, and I know there's a lot of people that are applying. So, the chances of actually getting it are probably better for the city than they are for the school district, but we'll apply just the same either way. You know, it's really kind of no harm, no foul when you apply for a grant and you're kind of thinking about doing the stuff anyways. So, yep.
Just to be clear, the grant is only for to do the work of the, kind of the prep work, not any of the physical solar panels or meters or anything like that?
Yep. It's essentially for planning and not implementation. And so, you can apply for one or the other. You can't apply for both. So, it's more or less, for the areas that don't have the expertise, you're asking for money to pay for that expertise to do this stuff. And for the areas that do already have it, then you're just saying, well, we have this project already kind of figured out, but we don't have the funds to do it, so we want these funds to do this stuff. So, some cities are farther ahead than others, so...
Get a planning grant, is there any timeframe that, or stipulations that we have to implement it in a certain amount of time if we're not, if we do the plan and we don't have the money to implement it right away? Is there any timeframe where we have to implement it?
Yeah, I guess for us, it would be, you know, figuring out the timeframe, how many hours we have for someone to do that. If we could find someone that would volunteer and be willing to do some of this stuff pro bono, awesome. Then we have in-kind services that, you know, we don't have to pay for. But there is a timeframe that the grant's looking at, and I can actually, I'll send that back through you guys to take a look at. If you, if, I believe that they had sent it out a little bit later in the process, so I didn't get it in your, didn't get it in your packet. But there's, essentially, if we decide at the end of it, we want to pull out, what they would do is they would yank out our prorated amount, because they've kind of set aside a certain amount for each members, and actually, I could probably negotiate that to be down. It's really kind of arbitrary, because what is someone's time valued at? Basically, if we were going to take a staff member, we would take whatever their hourly rate is and however many meeting hours we would assume that they would attend and just use that as a number. So, and a lot of the back work, I'm going to end up doing anyway, so...
Okay, anybody else? Otherwise, thank you, Corey. We look forward to hearing more about this.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, we also have a presentation from Gary Becker, and while he's setting up, I'm going to ask if anybody has any communications they'd like to share. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to remind people that the CIP meeting for this Thursday has been canceled. And for folks who are interested in attending, and especially the chairs, please fill out the doodle that Holly sent us in her June 22 CIP email.
Okay, are there any other communications? All right, here are none. Mr. Becker, the floor is yours.
Thank you. With the upcoming actions on the TID restructuring, we thought it would be a good idea, particularly with some new city council members, to just provide a brief overview of tax incremental financing. I call this a TIF 101. I'll try to make it as brief and painless as possible. So, here we go. So, what is TIF? Primary idea here is that TIF is simply a financing tool. It's a municipal financing tool to accomplish a couple of specific public objectives, including eliminating blight, conserving neighborhoods, promoting industrial development, and promoting mixed-use development. TIF is also a public-private partnership in a couple of different ways. The first way is that it's a partnership of taxing entities to leverage public benefits that flow from development. So, it's not only the city of Stoughton that's involved in creating or managing a TIF district. There are the overlying taxing jurisdictions as well, including Dane County, the school district, Madison College. Those are the primary overlying taxing jurisdictions, including the city of Stoughton. It's also a partnership with the private sector, because TIF is a vehicle or a tool to allow public investment into an area, but in order for it to work, it requires private investment as well. So, it's a public-private partnership in terms of the investment that's required to make this work. What TIF is not, and there's a lot of confusion in the public about TIF and what it is and what it isn't. It's not a tax exemption, so nobody's getting a break on their taxes, on their property taxes, because they're in a TIF district. The taxes on property in a TIF district are identical to the taxes outside a TIF district. There's no difference there. It's also not a tax rate increase, so there's no surcharge or any additional charges being placed on property in a TIF district. There's no difference in tax rates at all. It's not an entitlement. Just because you have property in a TIF district does not mean you're entitled to TIF benefits. It's, in order to get the benefits from a TIF, you need to apply to the city in order to secure them, and it's not an entitlement, and it's not a giveaway. Just because you have a project going on in a TIF district doesn't mean, again, that you're entitled to TIF benefits. Well, TIF was created back in Wisconsin. It was in 1976, when federal funding decreased for community development programs. And it was created as a way to allow cities and villages to invest with the private sector to stimulate economic growth, and it eliminated the situation where cities and villages bore the cost of preparing for development, but then, once development occurred, all the taxing entities shared in the benefit. So, taxing incremental financing is a way of allowing the city to collect the taxes that would ordinarily go to the overlying taxing jurisdictions and apply that revenue to the investment that would need to occur to make an area developable. TIF is pretty widely used in Wisconsin. It's one of the few tools that municipalities have to have some control over development in their community. In total, there have been a little over 2,000 TIF districts created. About 789 have been closed, so we've got a total active in 2018 of about 1,261 TIDS. So, we create about 50 approximately TIDS a year, and we terminate about, well, we create about 70, we terminate about 50. There are a number of amendments that occur every year, and there have been 102 TIF districts declared distressed, where they need some extra time in order to make their financials work out. The average TIF is terminated in 16 and a half years. 93% of all TIDS are financially successful. And then, a couple of years ago, I ran some numbers, just looking at what difference does TIF make when you're looking at the numbers and property values? And the average change in value in a TIF district across the state is about 10.8%. And if you look across all cities and villages, average annual change in equalized value is about 7.8%. These were from a couple of years ago, but just to show that TIF does make a difference when it comes to equalized value. So, how does it work? A city, the municipality is the one that's responsible for creating a TIF district. The municipality makes a finding that expected development would not occur but for TIF. So, not only the municipality, but the overlying taxing jurisdictions need to make this finding. It's one of the most important findings that the public entities make when creating a TIF district. The boundary that's established when you create a TIF district is where most of your project costs will be incurred, and it's where the revenue will be derived once development comes in. Once the boundary is set up and the TIF is created, then the Department of Revenue changes the way taxes are allocated. So, instead of allocating the tax revenue, property tax revenue, to the overlying taxing jurisdictions, the Department of Revenue changes the allocation so that it all goes to a city or to the city, but it has to stay in a special account that's protected. The tax allocation on the base value is unaffected. The base value is the value of the property in the district when the district is created. So, that's your base. So, that base value will continue to create revenue for the overlying taxing jurisdictions. That value is not affected. It's only the value that's created after the TIF is set up that the revenue from that goes into the TIF account.
What happens if the base value decreases over time then? So, that means that all the jurisdictions get less tax from that?
Well, the base value is fixed in time. It's the value that was in place when the TIF was created, so that'll never change. But the value of the property in the district could go below that amount, and that's an Let's see. And then, the tax revenue on new development is used to pay the expenses for preparing the area for the development. So, that revenue, that revenue on the new value that's being created is where the money comes from for the city to make its investment. So, the city usually ends up borrowing money to make the investment in the area, in the TIF district, and then new development comes along, creates new property value, that creates new tax revenue, and that tax revenue is used to pay off the debt that the city incurred. And here's a graphic that illustrates that. The bottom tier of colors is the base value. So, the different colors represent the different overlying taxing jurisdictions. In this case, the school district in yellow, the technical college in green, the county in blue, and the city in pink, or whatever that color is. Then, the triangle is, so, on the left side is the time, you know, going from left to right is time, and the left side is the year the TIF district is created. So, we go through time, and that base value stays the same. The overlying taxing jurisdictions are getting the same revenue out of the property in the TIF district as they did before the TIF, but that area in the triangle is the new value that gets created, and the revenue on that value stays with the city to pay back their investment. When the TIF closes, then the overlying taxing jurisdictions get all of the increased value that was created. So, they get the new revenue off of that after the TIF closes.
To clarify that, so what you're saying is, if our baseline for, basically, our revenue is here, and you could say the same thing with the school district, when it closes, it raises our base?
That's right. That's right. And that's when all the expenses have been paid off, and then the district closes, and then all the, all the taxing jurisdictions then get the benefit. Another way of looking at it is, here's an example where you have some underutilized property, and you can see the overlying taxing jurisdictions here. In this case, the property is assessed at $100,000. The mill rate is $25 per thousand. So, that means there's $2,500 a year coming off of this property flowing to the overlying taxing jurisdictions. So, then, the city makes investment in infrastructure and improving the site, making it ready for development. And so, in this case, the city expended $1.7 million, and most of that expense occurs on the front end. So, in year one, the line is thicker than in year five and seven in this chart. But then, over time, new development comes in, and it's just the reverse, where the new development doesn't happen right away, but it happens in later years in the TIF. But then, that revenue starts increasing, and it's enough to pay off the expenses that went into that. The property is still sending $2,500 a year to the overlying taxing jurisdictions while this is going on. And then, when it dissolves, instead of $2,500 a year going to the overlying taxing jurisdictions, in this case, there's been enough value created that there's $300,000 flowing to the overlying taxing jurisdictions. Some of the statutory provisions you need to be aware of is that 50% or more of the property in a district must meet at least one of the following criteria, and it relates to the purpose for which the TIF is created. So, it must either be an blighted area, in need of rehab or conservation work, suitable for industrial sites, or suitable for mixed-use development. Also, project costs must directly relate to the purpose for which the district was created, so eliminating blight, rehabbing or conserving the area, promoting industrial development, and promoting misuse development. And it must enhance the value of other property in the district. So, it's got to be an investment in the area that's enhancing the value for all the property in the area. There is a statutory requirement that you cannot create a new TIF district if you've got more than 12% of your city's equalized value as increment in all the existing TIF districts in the city. So, Stoughton is far from being, you're not close to that threshold. I think you're, and I've got it later in here, you're at 4.6%, I think it is. So, you're pretty far from that 12% limit. Yeah, there it is, 4.29%. We can't include wetlands, so all, you'll see, any legal description for a TIF district should have at the end of it, does not include wetlands. Cannot have wetlands in a TIF district. You can only have whole parcels. You can't split a parcel with a TID boundary. The overlying taxing jurisdictions have a say in what happens with your TIF district, and that happens through the Joint Review Board. The Joint Review Board is comprised of representatives of those overlying taxing jurisdictions plus an at-large member. And that, we had a meeting of the Joint Review Board just before the public hearing tonight, and Laura Trotter from the Chamber of Commerce was seated as the at-large member for this Joint Review Board. So, here's the overlying taxing jurisdictions again, and with the at-large member. And so, the Joint Review Board has, can approve or reject the TIF after the city council approves it. The Joint Review Board has a kick at the can as well. But they, they're, they have to base their decision on a couple of different criteria. Whether development would occur without the TIF, that's the but-for provision. Whether the economic benefits are sufficient to compensate for the costs, that is, is it economically feasible to do this TIF? And whether the benefits outweigh the anticipated loss in taxing, or tax revenues of the taxing entity. So, each of those overlying taxing jurisdictions need to make a calculation as to whether the loss of the revenue that's coming from that new development, whether that outweighs any anticipated loss in tax revenue for not collecting it for a period of time. There are a number of project costs that can be incurred. Here's a partial list of some of the things, including organizational, administrative costs, financial costs, et cetera, et cetera. Costs to promote development or redevelopment, so acquisition, demolition, site improvements, those kinds of things. The process for creating a TIF district starts with either the Planning Commission or Redevelopment Authority, some body that's responsible for development in the community, typically makes a request to the city council. As in this case, the, back in December, the Redevelopment Authority asked the city council to begin planning for this restructure that we're talking about, and so that was initiated by the Redevelopment Authority. The Joint Review Board reviews the proposal, and so we had a Joint Review Board meeting prior to tonight's public hearing, and they reviewed Stoughton's proposals. prior to tonight's public hearing, and they reviewed Stoughton's proposals. And then we have a public hearing, which we held just prior to this, where we present the district boundaries, the project plan, and talk about the creation of the district. Once the public hearing occurs, then the Redevelopment Authority will, at their next meeting, they'll approve the boundaries and the project plan, and then it'll go from the Redevelopment Authority to the city council. That'll likely be the second meeting in July when that occurs. And then the city council adopts the TIF district by resolution. And that creates, formally creates, the TIF district, even though it hasn't been certified by the Department of Revenue at this point in time. And then the Joint Review Board reviews the proposal and approves or rejects the district. And then after that, then we submit all the paperwork to the Department of Revenue, and they certify it, and that is what triggers the change in tax allocation. Couple of other tidbits of information. There is an expenditure period in which you can incur expenses, and that is five years less than life of the TIF. So if it's a 27-year TIF district, then the maximum expenditure period is 22 years.
Can you, I'm kind of lost on that part. So it's the first five years that we can incur?
The first 22 years.
First 22 years, okay.
So we have an example of, we have a TIF district that's scheduled to close, and I think it's 2026. And we would have until 2021 to spend money in that district.
Okay, got it, thank you. That's it.
The only expenditures allowed prior to the creation of the district are those related to planning or creating the district. So you can't prospectively make an investment that you expect to be paid back after the TIF is created. So you can't incur, you can't incur any real work within a district until the formal creation process has been completed. And then the TIF district terminates when enough revenue has been generated to pay all the expenditures, or after the set life for the district, which is either 20 years. And there's a number of different ways of coming up with different lifespans for a TIF district based on when it was created and that kind of thing. But for right now, the way the law sits, TIF districts can either be 20 years for mixed use and industrial TIFs, or 27 years for blight elimination and neighborhood conservation TIF districts. Couple of issues to keep in mind. First is the need. What's the need for the TIF? And what's the need for a specific TIF request that might come to the city? And the city council needs to balance the public benefit from the investment versus any private windfall that occurs, that somebody may be asking for, for example. You need to talk about what is an appropriate payback period. So if you're on the front end of a TIF, and you've got 27 years in front of you, then you can be thinking about payback periods that are 20 years, 24 years long, something like that. If you're in the 10th year of a TIF district, then your payback period is going to be quite a bit shorter than that. So keeping in mind the timing, where you are in the life of your TIF, and what the appropriate payback period is at that point in time is something that will come into play when you're thinking about making a TIF investment. You need to think about the broader fiscal impact, including the overlying taxing jurisdictions. Oftentimes, school districts are concerned about having housing within a TIF district, for example, because they're not getting the tax revenue into the school district to help offset some of the costs of providing education. They do get, also get, if they do have housing, they get student aid, or more aid from the state, so that helps offset that. But in Stoughton's case, the school district is interested in having housing because they need more kids in the school. Need to keep in mind development impacts. So there are quite a few impacts that can come from development, depending on what type it is and how it's played out. And so those impacts need to be kept in mind as you're thinking about the TIF district. The quality of development, and then also very important is consistency with other plans. Wisconsin has a law that requires plans such as a TIF project plan to be consistent with your smart growth plan or your comprehensive plan. And in this case, these plans are consistent. And then there's a risk management component to running a TIF district. Some municipalities will create a speculative TID. That is, they know they need improvements to happen in this area. They have no development in hand or no idea where the development might come, but they're going to create that TIF district and hope something will happen. That's a speculative TID. On the other hand, you have TIDs that are created that already have projects in hand, and there is a developer waiting for that TIF to be created so they can start their project. Stoughton's kind of in between those two. In either case, there's always risk, and it's important to understand and manage that risk. So part of, some of the risk comes in the timing and the phasing of expenditures. If you get too far in front of your expenditures without having that development in hand, then you're putting yourselves at risk of having some debt that may not get paid back. Development agreements is a way of managing risk. So a development agreement lays out the commitments that the community is making to the developer, and what commitments the developer is making to the city. There are ways of reducing the risk through development agreements, including a municipal mortgage on the property, or developer guaranteeing increment, insurance for property damage, performance bond, or pay-as-you-go TIF, where the developer agrees to pay the upfront investment for making the site developable, but then as the increment comes in and the revenue is available, they get paid by the city for that investment. Some recent changes to the TIF law. Expenditures can be made within a half a mile of the TIF boundary. You need to keep in mind, however, that there won't be any associated increment, because the increment only comes from within the TIF district. So you can make expenditures outside of the TIF district that support what you want to happen within the TIF, but you need to keep in mind, you have to have that revenue to help pay for those expenditures. And this last one is one that I'm really personally excited to see, this change in the TIF law. When the TIF is ready to close, it can be left open for an additional year to fund an affordable housing and home rehab program for the entire city. It's not just associated with the TIF district, but it applies across the city. So the next TIF district you have that you're closing, I would encourage you to, strongly encourage you to look at this provision. And then finally, I just put together this chart of Stoughton's TIDs. You've got five active TIF districts right now, three through seven, and you can see the years that they were created. Three is the oldest, and that's the first one to close. But that one, I think, Tim, you said 2026?
I was looking at the, in TID four, is what I think I was talking about.
Oh, that's the one, yeah, 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 that's right. And so, and then, all of your TIFs allow expenditures within the half-mile. Some of those districts were amended to allow that. Some of them allow for funding of housing improvement programs, like TID number five, and facade improvement programs for TID four and five. Some of the TIF plans allow for funding of the Redevelopment Authority. So TID number four has $150,000 in it for the RDA. TID number five is $600,000, although right now there's no increment, so it doesn't matter how much is in the plan. But you can allocate some funding from a TIF district to help pay for these administrative costs of making development happen. And then there's, the last column is what the current incremental value for each of those TIDs are. TID number six, there's a, keep in mind, there's a two-year lag between the year development occurs and when it shows up at the Department of Revenue as being value-added to the tax rolls. So the TID number six actually has more value than what's shown there, but it takes a few years for it to show up.
So in the TID number four, that one's eligible for the facade? Do you know what that would, specifically what that would include?
Well, the RDA is running the building improvement program.
The revolving loan fund?
The revolving loan fund.
Okay.
With that provision.
All right.
Is it's always funded by borrowing money?
Most of the time, except that if you have a development agreement, and it can be structured as a pay-as-you-go development agreement, that's.
At the beginning of a TID, a TIF?
Can you talk into the mic?
We can't hear you, Sid.
Oh, I'm sorry. At the beginning of a TIF, you have a certain amount that you believe that you want to borrow for that, and you run into problems. Can you borrow more money in the process of the TIF?
Yeah, you're only limited by the municipality's borrowing limits and prudence, you know, as far as getting out ahead of what you expect the development.
In our history with TIFs, have we typically borrowed money more than we have decided at the beginning to borrow? Do you know what I mean? I mean, if you, we anticipate a budget for a TIF, and then in the middle of the, in the middle of the TIF, you say, we need more money, and so we borrow more money. Has that typically happened for us?
No, it usually doesn't happen. You need to change both sides of the equation in order for it to work. And so if you increase the expenditures, you need to increase the development that you're planning to happen. And a lot of times, the market, you know, the market's not unlimited in what it can allow to happen.
So it's possible to borrow money, but it's not prudent necessarily to borrow money within the TIF?
Right.
Years, years of the TIF.
Right. That's right.
Even with the recent law changes, the only TID eligible for the affordable housing is number five? Is that correct?
No, any one would be eligible for affordable housing, but some of the TIF districts have, specifically have funding in the project plan allocated for housing rehab.
And that's what that column is?
That's what that column is. But for all of those TIF districts, when they close, you can institute that affordable housing option and keep it, any of them open for an extra year. Any other questions?
I'm just curious, is this entire presentation available somewhere for a review that you put up here? In other words, is there's a site where we can go and we can look through all this again for things we might not have understood completely as you went through?
I think it could be.
That would be lovely.
It's on my city website.
Okay.
It is on the city website, thank you. Okay, thanks.
There's one other question that I had, and I never quite understood it, that TIF funds are not supposed to be used for residential, because those are, you're supposed to stay away from that. But within a TIF district, sometimes you see a development of residential. And how does that, how does that square with the law that says that you're not supposed to be using TIF funds for residential buildings?
There is one type of TIF district you can use for residential, and that's a mixed-use TID. And so mixed-use TID, you can have up to 30% of the area in housing, and you can apply TIF funds to promote housing in a mixed-use TID. That's the only example where TID funds can go to housing on newly-platted, and the key language in the legislation is newly-platted residential. So.
So our Kettle Park West, is that, that allows for 30%?
I believe that's a mixed-use TID. And so that, you can have up to 30% of that area in housing, and you can apply TIF funds to promote housing in that area. Okay. Hope that wasn't too painful.
No, it was great.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your time.
You're welcome.
Okay, so let's see, the minutes and reports are in the packet. We do have a quick update from the city attorney regarding the status of the junior fair agreement.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I just want to update the council on this matter. By way of background information, the city and the Stoughton Junior Fair Association are parties to an agreement relating to Mant Park. They have been parties to such an agreement since as early as 2005. The last agreement that was entered into between the parties was entered into on October 8, 2008, and last renewed automatically in 2013. In early 2017, so last year, early last year, the city began working with the fair association to develop a new agreement to replace the current agreement. In late February of this year, the city sent a revised agreement to the fair association that was the culmination of the work between the two parties to that point. Based on the discussions that had occurred between the parties as of that time, I think our expectation or sense was that the city and the fair association were very close to reaching an agreement. Also, in February of this year, Mayor Donna Olson sent formal notice to the fair association that the city would not be renewing the current agreement. That notice had to be provided by February 28 of this year to avoid an automatic five-year renewal of the current agreement. As of today, the parties have not reached a finalized new agreement, and the current agreement will terminate on August 31 of this year. Last week, Mayor Swadley sent a letter to the fair association proposing to arrange a meeting in the near future to discuss any final issues regarding the agreement so that it can be finalized before August 31. And I just wanted to update the council on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public comment period, and I don't believe we have anybody signed up, but you're certainly welcome to come up and speak for three minutes if there's something that you've been just anxious to tell us. And if not, we'll keep moving. Is anyone interested? And seeing none, we'll keep moving. Item number four is the consent agenda.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
There's a motion by Boersma, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jensen, okay. And would anybody like anything removed or discussed, or?
Yeah, there's an error in the city council, June 12, under the item where we voted for the Aldermanic district appointment. My vote was left off in the reporting, so I would appreciate it if the minutes were revised.
Okay. We can do that? Is there, so do we have to amend it, or what do we do, just approve?
It should be removed from the consent agenda, and then there should be a motion to approve the, we should deal with those minutes after the consent agenda.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I moved, I asked to have the council minutes of June 12 removed from the consent agenda.
Okay. All right, so then we would just be voting on Resolution 119 of 2018, is that correct? All right, so any discussion on that one? Otherwise, all in favor of that consent agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None opposed, so we still have the issue of the minutes. So do you want, will we make a motion to amend it?
A motion to approve the minutes with the change relating to the vote on the Aldermanic district. Do you want to be more specific on what the change should say?
Basically, all the Alders were listed and what their vote was, and I was not on the list of Alders, even though I was present and I had voted.
So do you want to be listed as voting what?
Voting for Tim Riley.
Okay.
So that's your motion?
All right.
Yeah.
So we have a motion, is there a second needed on that?
I'll second that.
Second by Boersma, any more on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? All right, the minutes will be changed. Takes us to old business, ordinance 17 of 2018, and this is something that the clerk worked. worked on, and the city attorney is going to go through it.
Very briefly, this ordinance really does two things. This was brought to my attention by the city clerk. She had learned, I think during some training, that ordinances should address the confidentiality of certain information that might be provided to the assessor. So I was asked to work on the ordinance and, and really decided to do two things. One, to address the appointment of the assessor, because we don't have anything in our code on that. And so this ordinance provides for the appointment of the assessor by the common counsel and makes it clear that that could be an individual, or it could be a corporation or an independent contractor. Second, and to address the concern raised by the clerk, this ordinance indicates that if the assessor requests or obtains income and expense information from a taxpayer during the course of the tax assessment process, then that information shall be kept confidential with certain limited exceptions and is exempt from disclosure under the public records law, and this is a statutorily required confidentiality, confidentiality provision.
Go ahead, Sid.
Could I just address this just a little bit? We had some, the board of review had a requirement to ensure that at least one person be, be trained. And so the board of review training was through a video, and both, both Holly and I picked it up, that we had this fairly major thing that we were not doing. And so we discussed that and asked that that be brought to the attention of the, our city attorney plus, plus the city council to make it, make it work, because it is a requirement that we have this in our, in the language of the ordinance.
All right, so you ready to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move that we approve the ordinance 17, 2018, creating the chapter two, division 12, sections 2-32 through, 2-35 of the ordinance, code of ordinance is relating to the cussor and confidentiality of income and expense information.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any discussion on that?
No.
Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries, thank you. Ordinance 18 of 2018 comes from Public Safety, older person Jensen. Can you get the second reading?
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance 18, 2018, ordinance amending chapter 70-176 of the city municipal code, creating subsection parent 74 relating to parking restrictions on the east side of 7th Street from East Main Street south 450 feet, and I would so move.
And there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by older person Johnson. Older person Jensen, any comments?
It was, I believe this was brought to chief's attention, and we voted 4-0 to approve this.
Any comments, chief?
No, I, part of it was through consultation with the streets department over the issue of the steep drop-off along the east side of that roadway, and preventing parking there was kind of a safety issue as well.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, thank you. All right, takes us to new business. R 120 of 2018 comes from Park and Recreation, older person Hirsch, and I see we have a guest in the audience as well.
Sure, this is R 120, 2018, resolution authorizing the Boy Scout Dylan Lehman to place bluebird houses in our city parks, and I so move.
Second.
Motion, a second by Duransek, anything you want to add?
Yeah, so I'd like Dylan to come up and explain what you're proposing, where you're going to be placing it, and...
I want to adjust the mic a little bit so we can all hear you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Perfect.
Hello, my name is Dylan Lehman. I am from Boy Scout troop 167 here in Stoughton, Wisconsin. I am proposing an Eagle Scout project of bluebird houses, and here's the model I would be using. Pretty standard bluebird house, open it, you can clean it, pretty easy, some ventilation on the side. It's pretty handy for the blue, bluebirds, and bluebirds do like open areas, so I'm looking at places such as the disc golf course along the fence and Bjorn Park, there's some open areas there. I am proposing six bluebird houses throughout Stoughton, and I believe that's all.
Thank you.
Okay, older person Boersma, and then Johnson.
Just wondering, how do you attach them? Do you attach them to poles or trees, or what do you?
Yes, I would be attaching them to metal poles, so critters like raccoons and squirrels and stuff couldn't get up to the bluebird houses and harm the bluebirds inside.
How high are those poles about, Dylan?
They would be about six feet tall.
Okay, older person Johnson.
Why bluebirds?
The bluebird population in the Midwest has gone down recently, and they're a vital part in the food chain, eating worms and with decomposition and whatnot, so I believe that it would be a good thing to bring them back into the Midwest.
Thank you for doing that.
One more question, now, do you get help from other scouts to build up and build them?
Yes, I would have a building day along with the rest of my troop where we would build them and then place them throughout the parks.
Thank you.
Okay, older person Reeves?
I also think it's a great project, and I'm just curious, how often do they have to be cleaned, and is that something that would be an ongoing project for somebody as well? I don't know if you've had a chance to think about that part of it yet, but...
Yes, so you would need to check them every week or every two weeks to make sure that there's no other kinds of birds housing in them. They shouldn't be, but in case they are, you just kind of shoo them away, and they shouldn't come back. Otherwise, you do need to clean them about monthly, you just, well, not monthly, but monthly after the mating season, and once the bluebirds are not there, you go in, clean out the nest, and then every month you make sure nothing else is in there that shouldn't be in there. So I would be willing to do that, otherwise my Boy Scout troop is very willing to do that as well. It would be a good opportunity to get out into nature, learn about the bluebirds, and learn about the bluebird houses.
Great.
Older person Hirsch?
Sure, first, one, first question I have is, you're going to put them on metal poles, but you're putting in snake guards to make sure that no snakes or other rodents can, or other, not rodents, but other animals can't climb up, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not just a metal pole, you're actually putting in a guard, so...
So nothing else can get up into the house.
Second, I, I think there's a migratory bird treaty act that if another bird is nesting in there, you just cannot shoo them away. You would have to leave them be, and then at the end of the mating season, clean out the nest. So you better, I would kindly ask you to, like, look at that act, because there are some restrictions on that. And just curiosity, it would be interesting if your troop would actually monitor the nest to see if how many bluebirds actually come in. And so maybe if one nest is not attracting a bluebird, you might want to relocate it to a different place. And so it'd be kind of interesting for the whole troop to learn that about the bluebirds as well. But thank you very much for all that your work that you're doing. I think it's really great.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Otherwise, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, thank you. Good luck. All right, we're on item number eight, which is resolution 121 of 2018, and that comes from the Finance Committee, older person Duransek.
Yeah, the Finance Committee met on June 12th and recommends the council approve resolution 121, 2018, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to enter into an agreement to replace the boiler at the fire department using $10,000 from contingency and I so move.
Second. Motion by Duransek and a second by Jensen, older person Duransek.
Yes, you have before you a list of what's been taken out of contingency. I put this together for you so that you know kind of where we're at, and I would like you to kind of hold on to this, because of course, the Finance Committee will come with another request in two weeks for $10,000 for another project. So we're seeing that the contingency fund is dwindling, but we do have unassigned designated money, which if we want to, we could move some of that into contingency in the future if we absolutely need to do that. So I just wanted to kind of let you know that while we are using up contingency, we do have some other options to kind of replenish it in the future. And Rodney can address the whole issue with the boiler.
Okay, this is a boiler that was put in place when the fire department was constructed in 2008, nearing its 10-year warranty. We had boiler insurance, we're actually able to obtain about two-thirds of it through insurance proceeds. The $10,000 will allow us to fully replace it instead of repair it. We believe that's the recommended route to proceed with this, this project right now.
All right, any questions or comments?
I'm kind of lukewarm about this, but I think I will vote in favor.
Very cool.
Good comeback.
Oh, boy. Anything else?
Professor Sid.
Hard to top that. All right, all in favor of resolution 121 of 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries thankfully. Ordinance 20 of 2018 comes from the Planning Commission, older person Bartlet, can you take that one for me?
Yep, on the Planning Commission, this is O-20-2018, to amend the zoning code section 78-810, parentheses one, for the CC of the Stoughton Municipal Code. And, yes, for the sake of discussion, we voted to deny it in the Planning Commission, but sake of discussion, I'll make a motion approve.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second, would you like to explain this to us?
This was amendment to the zoning code to allow more banners, pennants, and streamers in the business district. It would not cover the downtown historic district. Over on 51, the Coons Country Bu, GMC of Stoughton, put up banners and signs on some light poles that they had, and they had requested this. You can see the photo of it, is when this came up, we noticed that, and it's more than allowed by the zoning code. And the Planning Commission is concerned about a number of issues about distracting drivers, and also that this would allow any type of banners pretty much along our gateways to the city, coming in 51 from either direction or along the business zone. So we did vote to deny it, so I will be not supporting this. So Rodney, would you like to add?
I think you summarized it quite well. The request came at, at the behest of the, the business that has the signs, that we found a noncompliance, and the Planning Commission deliberated on that at their last meeting.
Okay, any questions or comments? So the motion is in the affirmative, if you want to support the flags, you can certainly vote for it, or if you'd rather vote against, then you would vote no on this one. All the person, or President Mieske?
It's kind of curious, why are we voting on this if the, I mean, I know there was a request to change the ordinance. Planning Commission denied that request, so why are we now having to vote an affirmative or to, to back, or to back the Planning Commission? It is a commission, it has already made a judgment.
I don't think that commission is the ultimate authority on the ordinances. I think the ordinance has to be adopted or denied by the, by the council, so the recommendation came out of the Planning Commission to the council for their consideration.
And I do believe there's something in council rules?
I'm, I'm, wait a minute, back up, I'm, I'm not going yet. I, I get that, but, so anybody who, who has, who's been told by the Planning Commission that they're doing something that isn't kosher with the ordinances can say, "Well, I want a change," and it's going to have to come to council? And if so, then why do we have a Planning Commission?
There's a process, there's an application for a change, there's a fee for them.
Was there an application?
Yeah. They submitted paperwork for the request, it's in the packet.
Older person Jensen?
My concern here is that should the council decide to, well, even with that, this is an ordinance, shouldn't it be a first reading, second reading? That would be my concern and my question.
Oh, we're not changing the ordinance.
I, I understand that, but it's still, I believe it needs to go through the process of first reading and second reading unless we waive it, and I'm not sure about that, but I would like the attorney's opinion.
Yeah, you'd have to waive the rules in order to, in order to, to vote on it. The, the motion tonight should be either to suspend the rules and then to vote on it, or to just have a first reading.
I move to waive the rules for the second reading, that we can go directly to a vote tonight.
Okay.
I'll second that.
That's a two-thirds vote, I think.
Yes, and I heard a second over here, okay. And this attorney, directly pointed out, it's a two-thirds vote, we can do a voice vote, all right, okay. So all, any questions regarding waiving the rules?
No.
Okay, so all in favor of waiving the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. So do we have to remake that first motion, or we'll go right back to it?
No, that's right before the council, I would say.
Okay, so we still have the motion then, and the motion is in the affirmative, so any questions on that? Otherwise, all in favor of changing the ordinance would say aye, and all opposed would say no.
No.
Okay, I guess we know where that one goes. Thank you very much. And the next one is R 122 of 2018, and that's coming from the mayor's office, and I'm looking for somebody to make a motion to, to approve my recommend, my resolution for Mr. Riley, older person Riley, to be on the Public Safety Committee and the Community Affairs Council Policy Committee.
I so move.
Okay, I heard a motion by President Mieske, and was there a second?
Second.
Older person Duransek, any discussion on that? Are you up for it, Mr. Riley?
Sounds terribly exciting, I'm upward.
All right, that's the spirit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Are you with me? Okay, resolution 123 of 2018 comes from the Community Affairs Council Policy, older person Wiesinger?
R 123, 2018, resolution authorizing and directing the proper city officials to adopt a policy relating to attending city meetings via remote access. CACP approved the policy 4 to 0 on March 19, 2018. It's in the packet, basically it's saying that attending a meeting via telephone conference, call, video conference, or any other electronic media is prohibited, you must be physically present. If you're not going to be at a city council meeting or a committee meeting, you need to either let the city clerk know or the chairperson of the committee.
Okay, so is that your motion?
You can make the motion.
Sorry, can I restart?
Do whatever you want. Enough for this audience.
I will get it.
Is there a second?
Second.
So could Holly restate the motion?
Sure, I heard a second by older person Hirsch.
The motion was to approve our-123, 2018, resolution authorizing directing the proper city officials to adopt a policy relating to, relating to attending city meetings via remote access.
That's exactly what Nicole said.
Exactly.
All right, any discussion?
Somebody explain this to me one more time. No, I really, I really mean it, you know, so that means that we can't have, we can't have remote.
Right, basically what that means, you need to be physically here to participate and vote at a meeting.
And what about for committee meeting zone?
Yep, same thing.
Can't be...
You have to be physically present.
I have some issues with that, and that is, I think there are times where if you're in a, in a meeting, and we've, we've talked about that at various meetings, that if, if you have the thing on the desk and you have, and you're, you're, you're there in presence by verbally, by having that thing right there, and everybody is around you and all that, that doesn't seem like it's absolutely necessary to be present in person, but that's just my opinion. We've tried it before. We've tried it before. I shouldn't even admit it, but you know, I think that's happened a couple of times and, and I guess we've had, we need clarification on it, but for some room meetings, I don't see any reason why we can't be verbally present by, by telephone.
Okay. Alder Person Hirsch?
Thank you. Alder Borzma, I think what the, Alder Person Reeves can chime in because she was there at the meeting too. What we were concerned about is that it wouldn't just be one person calling in, it might be a whole, the whole committee calling in, and it would just be Holly there taking notes as opposed to that. And so we thought that it would be abused more than an exception, and so we wanted to kind of not allow it for fear that, I think somebody made the example that there was some council that it was, everybody called in and it was just the mayor and the city clerk in attendance.
That'd be jumping, wouldn't it?
It would be. And so that's why we went that way, because it's not just one person that would do it.
You think you want to add, Lisa? Otherwise, President Mieske has something.
No, I think you summed it up, and it's, it's not even so much about abusing as it just gets, you know, how do you put, what would the rules be? Well, you're, you're kind of sick, but you should really come, but you're really sick, so yeah, it's okay for you. And it's just sort of like either somebody's absent or they're not. And we, it got so gray that it just made sense that you're either present and voting or you're not. So it just, we felt like that was a little bit easier to swallow.
President Mieske, go for it.
I, I understand what everyone's trying to do here, and I know the situation that Alder Borzma was talking about, where we did try to call in because some of the committees have time, very time sensitive issues that are necessary, that must be taken care of. And for whatever given reason, you have, in the summertime, you have people who are on vacation or whatever, and you do have somebody who is in or on a family emergency. It's one of those perfect storms, and we needed to get a, a resolution to a, to an issue, and it had to be done. And there were financial ramifications that were huge if we did not. And it was used, then there was no rule at the time stating that you couldn't. We did, we did go through, I believe at the time, we did check with the attorney's office with that, the former mayor did. And so I see both sides of this. You know, I mean, I think everybody who sits in this room, I don't think everyone's going to take, take their duties lightly and are going to be phoning it in, so to speak, where we're going to have Holly sitting in the room by herself. And so I, I don't know which way I'll vote on this. This is, I understand, have we had problems with this in the past? I mean, why, why did we bring this up? Why is this being brought up now? I don't even need clarification. How many instances have we had where people have requested it? I guess you have to ask yourself that. And like I said, I think everybody in this room is responsible and dedicated and would not be abusing that situation, and it would be used in emergency and only when it's absolutely necessary.
All right, I have Alder Person Borzma, Riley, and then Hirsch.
One of the situations that we're, we're often faced with honestly is that we, we may have somebody available by phone, potentially available by phone, but we have one, one short of quorum, and we have to cancel the whole meeting, and it, everybody is sitting there waiting for somebody to get there and somebody's late on the belt line or whatever, and they can call in and potentially be part of that meeting. It very, it mostly works, I think, when there's one person that is gone and we're not quite at quorum and we just cancel the meeting and it's just not worth people's time to be sitting there. And, or somebody's late, you know, it just, it creates a, it creates a barrier, I think, to, to good government, actually, to not allow that. I, you know, I, I worked as a social worker a long time in, in the court system, and judges would have the right to say, you know, well, maybe we can have that person appear by phone. And if it was abused, the judge would not allow it, and if it was not, if it was not an abusive search situation, the judge had the flexibility of doing that. And I, I see that as potentially the same kind of issue that in emergency kind of situations, like Tom was saying, if we need it, we should be able to use it, so.
Holly voting against this.
Okay. Alder Person Riley?
Thank you. Might it make sense to consider amending, or maybe taming this and amending if it's appropriate to table at this point, I don't know. But in any event, thinking about amending it to allow chairperson's discretion with respect to allowing a council person to appear by phone or Skype or something else, and that then would allow the chairperson to take into consideration the concerns that have been expressed with respect to timeliness on certain matters that need to be, matters that need to be dealt with, but that you do not have a quorum for. Is that a motion? I would move, yeah, I would so move.
Okay. The amendment or?
Well, if we can move for the amendment, I would move for the amendment. Otherwise, I'd move to table.
I would say you could start with the amendment. If you table it, we can't discuss it.
Okay, yes, then I would, I would move that the proposed ordinance be amended as stated.
Okay. Did you touch the amendment, Holly?
Certainly. I'm proposing that it be amended to provide that the chairperson of any committee would have discretion and authority to allow a council person to appear by remote means as they deemed it appropriate.
I second.
And I heard a second by, just to help, I think, we shouldn't say any, any committee, it should be said any standing committee.
By a standing committee chair?
I think just to clarify.
Well, right now, the way the policy's drafted, it would apply to the city council, any committee, any commission, any board, everything. That's the way this, this document is, and so you...
And in my opinion, there's, the thing that we're looking to do is for standing committees.
Can't agree with that.
If it's any committees outside of that, I don't see where we have as big of an issue. I don't mind taking in information from someone calling in or...
Let me just make sure I understand then the proposed amendment to the policy. Was the proposed amendment, could, could you restate the proposed amendment?
Sure. I would propose that this be amended to provide that the chairperson of any, perhaps it should read standing committee, I understand the point, would have discretion and authority to allow a council person to appear by phone or some other remote means if the chairperson deems that appropriate and, you know, for the, for the meeting or the matter under consideration.
Okay. And did I, I heard a second from Alder Person Johnson, was it?
Yeah.
Did you second that? Okay, and then I had Alder Person Hirsch and then Borzma.
Thank you. Before you made that amendment, I was going to offer that it goes back to CACP to get the leg, language correct, because I think it should be more than just a standing committee because there might be an emergency situation for the city council that it might be the whole city council that might, the mayor might need to make that judgment too. So even though we thought we had it all kind of worked out, I'm hearing some really good arguments to kind of really think about this a little bit more thoughtfully and see what other special circumstances that we did not think about at that time to try to get it captured. So I was going to make it a motion to send it back to CACP to work on it, but I don't know if I can do that with that motion on the floor.
Yes, a motion to refer would take precedence over the motion to amend. So you could make a motion to refer the matter back to committee if you wanted.
I would suggest if you do that, do something similar as Alder Person Riley did, and that's give some direction to the committee.
Right, well, Alder Person Riley will be on the committee, so he can help us with that.
And anybody else has any? Yes, then it should work out rather nicely. So is that a motion?
So I have to make a motion to send it back to committee.
Okay, so there's a motion to send it back, which...
That needs to be seconded and it is...
Is there a second for it?
I second.
Okay, and you got your hand up. Are you getting tired yet?
Yeah, okay, so as, here's, here's a concern that I have about Mr. Riley's proposal. I heard him say, give, give the chair discretion to allow a council. And on many of our committees, we don't have just council people on those committees. There, there are other people other than on council. I just wanted to clarify that for Mr. Riley.
I think that's good feedback for the committee to consider.
Right, that's why I kind of want to flush it out, not rewrite it on the fly.
Okay, we're good.
And then Alder Person Johnson?
Yeah, and that's why I was saying of standing committees, because your, your subcommittees, you know, the library committee and so on and so on, those, they don't have the same legislative fault that we are, or responsibilities that we have. So if you, if you're just putting it into the, into a standing committee or council, if you have it as council as well, you're eliminating that issue. They can, they can do whatever they want, and it won't affect us.
I gotta say something.
Wait, oh, wait, wait.
He's not going to be at that meeting, he's out of town.
I've already discussed this with the chairperson.
He's gonna, he's gonna have to appear by phone.
It'll probably, I don't know if it'll be on, that'll be up to the chairperson to put it on either the July meeting or the August meetings. Call it down. Did Alder Person Borzma?
And I don't, I don't think it should apply, just, just for my, my giving feedback, I think, to the future committee if it goes back to committee to have more discussion. I don't think it should apply to city council. I think it should, it could apply to other things, but not city council. This is like, this is like precious that we're all here. I don't think it should apply to city council.
Okay, any other feedback for our chairperson? Attorney Dragney?
I think the council has adopted what I'm holding up here, which is entitled Rules of the Common Council Committee Boards and Commissions of the City of Stoughton. So you should probably consider, if you're going to adopt a policy, consider it as an amendment to this set of rules that exists already. And I looked through them, there is nothing in the rules currently that addresses this issue.
Okay. Anything else on that? Otherwise, we have a motion and a second to refer it back to the CACP. Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Thank you. And that takes us to R. 124, 2018, and this is coming from the Utilities Committee. And Alder Person Hirsch, would you like this one?
Sure. R. 124, 2018, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the Stoughton Utilities 2017 wastewater treatment facility and sanitary sewer collection system compliance, maintenance, and report. Utilities Committee approved this six to zero on May 14th, 2018, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Hirsch and a second by Riley. Anything you want to add to that or?
If Bob wants to talk to this.
Hopefully quiet over there tonight, Bob.
Yes, I can just add, this is a time sensitive issue. You see it annually coming from the Utilities Committee. We get the form in early June and we have to get it back to the DNR this month. For the most part, the scores are excellent. We do have all As and one D, and the D has to do with the design of the plant. On paper, we're organically overloaded, but the treatment plant still does an excellent job at the treatment, so we don't look upon it as an issue.
Any questions on Resolution 124? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed?
Vote to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn by Borzma.
Vote to adjourn.
Second by Caravelo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, thank you. Good night.
Who's gonna go get my umbrella from my car?